Good evening, everyone. I call the Marlington Local School District Board of Education Special Meeting to Order on November 5, 2020 at 6 o'clock p.m. Dr. Main, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Gabriel?
Here.
Mr. Hagan?
Here.
Mrs. Humphreys?
Here.
Dr. Mason?
Here.
Mrs. Stevens?
Here.
Adoption of the meeting agenda. Are there any additions or corrections? I recommend that the Marlington Local Board of Education adopt the following agenda for November 5, 2020. Special meeting. Is there a motion?
I'm moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Dr. Main, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Gabriel?
Yes?
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphreys?
Yeah.
Dr. Mason?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevens?
Yes.
Approve 5-0.
Is there a motion to enter into executive session in accordance with ORC 121.22 to discuss matters required to be kept confidential by federal law or regulations or state statutes?
So, ma'am?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Gabriel?
Yes?
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphreys?
Yeah.
Dr. Mason?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevens?
Yes.
Approve 5-0.
If everyone would disconnect from their Google Meet and join the Zoom meeting, that was, the link was sent to you earlier, and we'll see you there.
Carolyn, you all came back on muted.
I'm not.
Thank you. We're declared out of executive session at 6:32 and we will continue with the discussion renovations of Lexington and Washington Elementary School. I'll turn it over to Dr. Mike.
Okay. I don't see Becky. Becky on? I don't know. I don't think she's on.
Does she have the link?
Ben, did you send a link to Becky Princehorn for the meeting for the general?
For, I sent one for the work session and I just reset it to her while you guys were there as well.
Okay. She may be looking for it. She probably gets a ton of emails every day. I guess while we're waiting for Becky, I can, I don't know if everybody had a chance to see that Consumer Bank weighed in on rates and they were very competitive with Huntington. I gave you those rates. They're under 2%. So that was nice. They are our bank. They're the bank that we work with. So we have, I guess, a nice competitive from both.
Are you able to get them down on the prepayment penalty with Shaw? They had proposed what 3% in the first year, 2% in the second, 1% in the third?
Well, the reason they were able to do that, and they said it doesn't appear that we'd pay it off in three years, that maybe in that fourth year. So they felt that that was the way they could do it with their higher office or whatever you want to call it. Okay, Chris is saying, let me see. Hello? Okay, Ben said he just sent it, we sent it to you. It should be a Google link. Ben, does Chris, Becky is coming on. What about Chris McCluskey? Does he have?
Uh, let me double check. He was on. Yeah.
Hello? Okay, that was Becky again. She said she didn't get it. You have the rprincehorn@bricker.com and then Chris.
Yeah, I have two bricker.com email addresses that were included.
I wonder if it went to their spam mail.
Yeah, that's possible. I just sent you a snapshot of the meeting code. They could dial in by phone or the URL to connect is in that snapshot as well.
Okay. Okay, I just sent that to both of them. Okay.
Okay, I just got a notification that Rebecca accepted the invitation. So she must have found the email. They can't be far off now.
Okay, Becky's trying to get on. She's got it. What about, have you seen Chris yet, Ben?
I have not. Yep, I just did.
Okay.
So can we discuss the different options for the different financing options? Again, Dr. Mike, while we're waiting. You're muted. Dr. Mike, you're muted.
Does it look like they're trying to come on, Ben? Now Ben's muted.
You're muted, Ben.
Then you're muted.
I haven't seen them connect yet. The email from Chris said that Rebecca will be connecting.
Okay.
And there she is.
All right. Okay, there we go. Uh oh. It looks, is Rebecca frozen?
No, she's not on here. She is, she did connect muted.
Okay. Hear me now.
Okay, all right.
There we are.
Oh, finally. I am so sorry.
Oh, no, no trouble.
Okay.
Okay. So I think where we were was now going to move into talking a little bit about the financing piece. And the statute for that is a lot more user friendly than the House Bill 264 process that Chris was describing earlier. And what we basically are doing is a bank loan and they would take a security interest in the improvements until, it's kind of just like your house mortgage. Bank will take a security interest in the improvements until you make all the payments and then you're done. The thing that is unclear to me right now, I've worked a good bit with Plug Smart over the years, is whether everything is going to be able to be described as personal property or whether any of it is going to become fixtures. And the reason I say that is the bank, and I can get more information from Chris, but if it's a fixture, the bank's going to want an interest in the underlying real property. And again, not unlike your house mortgage. If you're borrowing money to put windows in your house, it's a lot different than if you're borrowing money to put things in the walls. So we'll figure that out, but given the size of the project, you should be able to do this in a direct bank placement kind of arrangement, which is very different than if you were going to do a public offering of securities with all the regulation that goes with that. This is pretty much a straight bank loan, like I said. The questions are going to be, is anything going to be a fixture? And if so, then we might have a little extra paperwork, but it's not that big of a deal. I believe Mr. Hagan had asked, could we get a prepayment without penalty option? That would be something to ask and you would be negotiating the terms with the bank and that would be something certainly to ask for. And it's particularly important for districts like yours that are basically going to pay for this largely out of pipeline revenue. We've been doing a number of financings to the west and south of you guys, all pipeline backed. And many of them, now those were public offerings, so it's not quite as simple as negotiating with one entity, but regardless, many of them are doing shorter call periods so that they can, once the appeals get resolved for Nexus and Rover and the money starts to flow, they can pay down. They're done. And somebody had asked in earlier conversation, a little bit about the payments and I'm sure as your treasurer can tell you, they're paying, but they're not paying on the full value, only on the undisputed portion. And Nexus is now down to 38% of the original portion. And you're really lucky because Alan Harold has been one of the auditors in the state that has really been on top of this. And he had shared with me the spreadsheet that he does for each of the districts in Stark County and Marlington. Yes, you've gotten some payments, but it's only on the undisputed portion. The situation with the appeal is that the final determination of the tax commissioner was appealed to the Board of Tax Appeals and the hearing on that is not until May of 2021. So it's not going to get resolved anytime in the immediate future. And it is most likely that those appeals will continue and go to the Supreme Court. But they are paying in the undisputed portion and I haven't talked to your treasurer about this yet, but I am assuming that that would largely be the cash flow that would be used to support 4.7 million, thereabouts, borrowing. Is that right? I think she might be muted.
Okay. As I understand, that was our intentions.
Yeah. So what we'll need to do is work with most likely a financial advisor that can help crunch those numbers and show you what the cash flow is and match that to the debt service under current interest rates. And Mike, I don't know if you knew this. When there were other kinds of considerations being made about financing some improvements, the district had been working with Marvin Founds at Baker Tilly to do that kind of analysis. I don't know if that is still the board's intent, but he is very familiar with your situation.
Could you give us the name of that individual again?
His name is Marvin Founds, F-O-U-N-D-S, and he is with Baker Tilly, T-I-L-L-Y. And his role would be to help the district plan its financing, making sure that the cash flow was comfortable to retire the debt. The debt could be issued for up to 30 years if you wanted to go that far. I would not recommend that with a pipeline-backed financing. Marvin is actually working with Dan Levin Good at Mike's old district right now on refinancing some debt, so he's very familiar with direct bank placements. That's how that is being done. And pretty straightforward. But I do think, you know, I'm not a finance professional. He can run numbers and tell you what the interest rates are gonna be. I can tell you what the law is. I can make sure the papers are all correct. But I really think for something like this, you would need someone in that role to advise you.
So Rebecca, you said May of '21, the appeal, correct?
That's the hearing before the Board of Tax Appeals. And then after that, there can be additional appeal, either to, they have a choice. They can go to either the Ohio Supreme Court or they can go to various courts of appeals throughout the state. My hunch would be that they would go to a Supreme Court. But Mr. Mason fighting about it is gonna take some time. And so that's why I would be looking at the cash flow that you're getting now on the undisputed portion and making sure that the district can live within that. If the appeal is favorable to all the districts, then that's gravy on on top. But we want to make sure you can comfortably live within the cash flow you're gonna be getting in the next, I would guess, couple of years. I don't mean to be a downer, but I'm a realist.
No, I mean, that's what I want to know. And it would be, the Ohio Supreme Court is notoriously slow. So it could be how long after that?
It could be a while, and it could be a while to get a ruling from the Board of Tax Appeals. It's a complicated case.
But you're saying that if we structure it with our 38% undisputed portion, structure our payments using that so that we don't put our cash flow in harm's way? And then if we do get a settlement two or three or four years down the road, then that's just extra to the district at that point in time.
Right. And depending on how things evolve, not, I don't want to give you a false hope, but there are provisions in the law with respect to interest and penalties. Depending on which way it goes, if it ends up that they have grossly underpaid, they could owe penalties and interest on the amount that the district did not get in this interim period.
Is there any way, is there any way for you to make a projection what you might anticipate? Will they'll settle on, or there's no way to know that at this point in time?
I think it's very difficult to know. I just did a webinar for Mike and Patty's Professional Associations, an OSBA, yours, last week. And in that, I would characterize the arguments that are being made as sort of threefold. In the first group, there are arguments that the pipeline companies are making where the tax commissioner said they had not provided adequate evidence or information for him to make a determination. So there's gonna be additional information that's gonna be before the Board of Tax Appeals. The second group of arguments kind of fall into what I call the self-created hardship. This is a little bit more Rover than Nexus, but Rover had a number of spills which caused them to have increased regulatory efforts and scrutiny, and that delayed their time to get it done. Nexus did not have as much of that, but they had some self-created hardships for sure. Then the third area of, primary area of argument is what has happened to their business models? I think most of you know there is an oversupply of natural gas right now. And consequently, the rate of return to their investors and their business models aren't syncing up with where they thought they would be at this point in time. Because there's just too much natural gas, and then you layer on COVID and not as much use of oil and gas products. There's just the whole business model aspect. So those are kind of the three areas, more information needed, self-created hardships, and a business model that doesn't work now. And I imagine there will be some relief to the pipeline companies if they can provide adequate information for the first group of arguments. The tax commissioner was not very sympathetic to the second and third groups of arguments.
Well, their value, could you clarify how the value is determined? Is that based on the cost to build it?
Yes, cost to construct has nothing to do with what is going through it.
Okay.
It's cost to construct.
Didn't they use the argument that they had a lot of overruns and costs to construct as the reason why they wanted the taxes reduced?
There was some of that.
Why would their legal team use that as the basis for their argument, since that would actually increase the taxable value?
I, that's, I'm puzzled by that, too. The other thing that is a real puzzlement, and Alan Harold and a group of auditors around the state are looking into this, is there were some increased places in Ohio where there was increased value this year going into next. And part of that, I don't think that affects Stark County much. There are some other places in the state where there were significant increases, and we think, we're trying to run that down. We think what that was, was some pipeline improvements, particularly up close to the compressor stations and all, got put in the wrong school districts. And rather than go back and correct it, it's being corrected now to go forward. I don't think that's you guys. I think it's pretty clear what's in Marlington. But Alan's in that group that's trying to sort all that out statewide.
Becky, could you also explain whether or what ability Nexus would have to appeal once all this is settled? Can they continue to appeal on this value, or it's settled once it goes through all the channels?
I said this last week, and I know it sounds simplistic, but the fight is now. There's a reason why there are these fulsome appeals, because once you get beyond the initial determination of the cost to construct, there are gonna be additions and enhancements to the pipelines and the compressor stations over time. But the big fight is over cost to construct. And so as I said, the fight is now. These enhancements will not be at the same level as the initial construction cost. That is why I think, you know, we're in for a couple of years till this all sticks out. So back to the financing, the idea would be, I think, and I'll get with Chris tomorrow, timing, once you've decided which way you for sure are going in your negotiations over the project, then we'll kind of back into timing on when you need the money. I'm I'm one of those people, you know, you really, you get everything ready, but you don't pull the trigger until you absolutely have to to sign the contracts. You don't want to incur interest expense too early.
Well, Dr. Mike's gotten us some different options from a couple of different banks. And can we move now? Is that appropriate as far as those different options that we were looking?
What I think you'll want to do, and this is just my suggestion, is probably talk to Baker Tilly and have them prepare an amortization schedule that matches this Nexus cash flow. And then what we typically do is work on what we call a term sheet that would outline the district's preferences in terms of the way the debt would be structured. I would recommend an earlier call than maybe you normally would have because of the pipeline situation. If those appeals get resolved and you can pay a big chunk off, I think that's in the district's best interest.
Yeah, we, sorry, we were
I was gonna say, we put these term sheets together, and then we would give them to these banks and see who provides the best response. And it's more than just, I know the interest rate is most important, but it is more than just that, because I think you're gonna want, because of the pipeline backing, you're gonna want that flexibility to be able to pay it off quicker. That's what we did for Tuskegee Valley and Fairless and Hillsdale, which is over toward Worcester.
Becky, just know, I think both banks are willing to work with us on that. And Huntington gave us those amortization schedules, but we could have, I'm sorry, is it Marvin? We could have him look at those and talk to us about those.
So who have you talked to? Huntington and?
Consumers. Consumers is a smaller, more local bank, but that's our bank, our main bank with the school district.
Did a project with them for Lewisville.
Oh, okay, yeah, would make sense then, yeah. Just, so I think, Becky, I might have mentioned, the rates are under 2%, are hovering around 2%.
Yeah, rates are, the market's been quite anxious pending the election, and now that things hopefully will settle down, hopefully pretty soon. I think everyone's thinking rates will continue to be low.
Yeah.
Just take a few moments, and you had met with Marlington back when we first started talking about the Nexus pipeline, and the project was just getting started, and you had recommended that we set up a capital projects fund, which we did to channel those pipeline monies into, and then use that for capital projects. Could you just give us, we've got some new board members, if you could give some background on that as to the reasoning behind that and the benefits of doing that?
Sure. 570513C, as in cat, is one of my favorite sections of the revised code. Now you know that's lame when you have a favorite section of the code. But the reason I really like it is it's perfect for your situation, because at motion of the board, you can create it, you can put money into it, and if something happens and you need to take some money back out of it, you can. Very flexible. The other kind of way to set money aside would be to put it in a permanent improvement fund, but to get it back out could require a court order. And it's just too difficult. I like, particularly with all the pipeline districts, this was a wonderful way to get it out of the forecast, out of the general fund, set aside for a project that you knew was coming. And then once you sign your contracts, then you can do one of two things. You can either use that money to pay costs directly, or you can use that money to pay payments on the lease purchase. The financing of a permanent improvement is in itself a permanent improvement. So you've got ultimate flexibility. And again, that's why I really like it, because you only have the parameter that you need to at least enter into a contract or a financing of a permanent improvement within 10 years of creation of the fund, and we're nowhere near that. I think, I'm forgetting exactly what date we did it, but you haven't had it that long.
Right.
But it's a very flexible tool.
I have a question. If we were to transfer some of the money from that fund to, back into the general fund, how would that affect our state funding?
It would ripple through. Of course, we have no state funding formula right now, but in the old days, it would have rippled through, they have a three-year cycle where they look at tax-based and local revenue. So again, I think to have it in a capital projects fund is the better place to have it, so it didn't, because that was a worry early on that it would upend the apple cart. Now, the legislature just amended another provision of the code with respect to school districts that have an increase of more than 10% in their value from a public utility. They took that lid off. And while that's a good thing, I'm waiting like everybody is to see what the new formula looks like and how they're gonna handle folks like you and others who have the prospect of significant increases in value. I saw a map that ODE had put together. And let's just say it was heavily detailed. They know exactly who you are. And so we'll just have to see how the new formula, I think it's supposed to be tomorrow, is the press conference, I believe. How they treat you. And so again, I think setting the money aside in a dedicated fund that you can have some flexibility around is a really good thing. Thank you. Anything else for me?
Does anyone have any further questions for Becky?
I'm good, thank you. I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you, Becky, for joining us. And the same, I can contact her if you need me to, if you have questions, I can get them over to her and get answers.
Okay.
Well, thank you very much. We appreciate your information. It's very helpful.
Good. Well, good luck. I'll be talking to Chris and I'll be happy to see this project get underway.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Becky.
Good night, Becky. Bye.
I guess we have a separate link for the other, for the regular meeting.
Okay, so there's no more discussion on this, right, Dr. Mike? Did you have any other things you wanted to cover on the renovations?
No, no, not at this time.
Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
Do any discussion? Please call the roll. Yes?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphries? Dr. Mason?
Yes.
Yes.
Approved five zero.
So if everyone will close out of this Google Meet link and reconnect through the regular meeting, Google Meet link.
Hi, everybody.
Good evening, everyone. I called the Marlington Local School District Board of Education Regular Meeting to order on November 5th, 2020 at 7:12 PM. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The reading of the mission statement will be by Dr. Mason.
In collaboration with staff, community, parents, and students, the Marlington School District will develop lifelong learners who understand and apply knowledge and demonstrate excellence in pursuing the highest standard with effective intervention to challenge every student.
Thank you. This meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not intended to be considered a public community meeting. Dr. Maine, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Gabriel?
Here.
Mr. Hagan?
Here.
Mrs. Humphries?
Yeah.
Dr. Mason?
Here.
Mrs. Stevens?
Here.
Adoption of the meeting agenda. Are there any additions or corrections? Is there a motion for the Marlington Local Board of Education to adopt the following agenda for the November 5th, 2020 Regular Meeting?
I moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Gabriel?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphries?
Yeah.
Dr. Mason?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Approved five zero.
Public participation. Dr. Maine, did you have any public participation documents submitted to you for this board meeting?
I did not receive any documentation.
Thank you. Special presentations. Dr. Mike?
Hey, evening, everybody. Ben is queuing up for us. We have something special for you this evening. We decided to tweak our presentations of honoring our specific students. And if everything goes well, you will get to meet them at least via a video about each one. So Ben, I'm going to let you roll with these. Did you hear any audio on?
No audio.
I, I don't think, and they were kind of frozen.
Good evening. I'm Mr. Spandio, Principal, Marlington High School, and I'd like to present our Teens of the Month. Our first Teen of the Month is Ms. Laura Coman. Laura is the daughter of Amy and Jim Coman. She has multiple achievements and activities she's participated in in high school. She is the class president for the class of 2021. She's a member of Character Council, where this year she is also the president. She is a student council member. She's a part of Interact Club. She's a member of our Link Crew program. She's an Altman Ambassador. She is part of the National Honor Society, the Youth Leadership Program, the Ulster Project, and a varsity softball player. After school, Laura plans to attend Mariota College and earn a degree in pre-physical therapy where she plays softball. Congratulations, Laura. Our second Elks Teen of the Month is Philip Ryan. Philip is the son of Greta Ryan. He's a member of our National Honor Society and our Character Council organization. Philip was an Alliance Chamber of Commerce Student of the Month, as well as our, as our Stark State and Canton Repositorial Student of the Month nominee. He is a Boise Buckeye State member. He was the junior homecoming attendant, and he also placed last year at the indoor state track championship. Philip enjoys restoring his tractor, monitoring and mowing lawns, and participating in track and field, both indoor and outdoor. Philip enjoys running his own lawn care business as well as working on motors. After high school, Philip plans to attend college someplace, but still unsure what his major will be. Congratulations, Philip.
Good evening, and thank you for joining us tonight. I am Nick Evans, the middle school principal, and here with me today is our first Student of the Month, Leanne Wagner. Leanne is an eighth grader, and Leanne is the daughter of Gary and Diane Wagner. She's really enjoying all of her classes this year. When I asked her what her favorite class was, that's awesome. She's been a member of our gamers club for the past three years, and in her spare time, she enjoys swimming at the North Canton YNCA. Leanne's teachers had this to say about her. She encourages her classmates during all activities. She always wants us to keep going and get a higher score as a class. Leanne has been a diligent worker in class all year long. She is a responsible young lady and actively participates in class. Awesome stuff right there. Congratulations, Leanne. Keep up the great work. Okay, back with our second Student of the Month here for the middle school. I have eighth grader Jake Harper with me. Jake is the son of Josh and Tina Harper. His favorite classes are reading and math. When Jake isn't in school, he enjoys riding his new mini bike and going camping with his family. Jake's teachers had this to say about him. Jake's very responsible, never misses a beat. Everything was even turned in when he got back from being absent. He actively participates in lessons. He goes above and beyond his classwork, always doing extra. Willing to ask questions while working. He's a diligent worker as well, and just genuinely, genuinely wants to do well. A very impressive young man. Congratulations, Jake. Keep up the good work.
Hi, I'm Renee Kaylee, the principal at Lexington Elementary School, and we are here today to recognize Lexington's November Kiwanis Student of the Month. Kiwanis Student of the Month is Tanaya Spencer. She was nominated by her fifth grade teacher, Mrs. Porter. And here are some things that Mrs. Porter had to say about Tanaya. Tanaya comes to class every day eager to learn. She puts a great amount of effort into everything she does. Tanaya works hard on her classwork, and it exceeds expectations. She is a positive role model and is always willing to lend a helping hand to a classmate. Tanaya, we would like to congratulate you on being our November Kiwanis Student of the Month. Keep doing an awesome job, and we're proud of you.
Hello, and please join me in congratulating our Marlboro Kiwanis Student of the Month for November, Ms. Jordan Marks. Jordan was chosen based on her ability to come prepare her class and make the best use of her time. Jordan always has her supplies and materials ready for learning. She pays attention in class and uses her best manners. She sits up attentively in her chair and turns all of her work in on time. Jordan is a great example of our Duke pride expectations, and we can't wait to see how she continues to grow throughout this school year. A few things you may not know about Jordan. Her favorite subject is reading. She lives with her mom and dad. She has a brother named Garrett and a sister named Zalina. She also has a dog named Roxy, and she likes to play outside with her family and Roxy. When she grows up, she wants to be a veterinarian and would love learning of animals, especially those Indian. She plays travel softball, and her team is called the Ohio Phantom, and she also loves to swim in the summer. So ladies and gentlemen, Marlboro Fifth Grade Kiwanis Student of the Month for November, Jordan Marks.
I am standing here next to the Kiwanis Club's Student of the Month for November, fifth grader Scarlett Shor. She is the recipient of the Kiwanis Award, and I'd like to read a few things that her teachers had said about her. Her teacher said that Scarlett is an excellent student who is friendly and listens well to teachers. She is lively and is fun to be around. She enjoys her brother being on the swim team with her, and she would like to visit all 50 states. Her favorite subject is social studies, and in her free time, Scarlett likes to swim, play soccer, and play video games. It's my honor to award her the Kiwanis Student of the Month. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations to all our Students of the Month, and that was very nicely done. Moving to all business. Is there a motion to approve the settlement agreement between the Marlington Local School District Board of Education and Joseph Knoll as presented and marked Exhibit YYY? Do we have a motion? And this, we need to, do we have a motion?
No move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Gabriel?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphries? Mrs. Humphries?
Yeah.
Oh, thank you. Dr. Mason?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Approved five zero.
New business, Marlington in motion, opportunities for improvement, comments moving forward. Is there any board discussion under this topic?
If no one else has anything I do, assuming, once again, we still have not received a bill for any Markling. And so I want to make a motion that we amend paragraph E of the engagement letter between McGowan and Marlington Local School District. Paragraph E is entitled Billing Procedures/Statements, and I propose the following amendment to the first sentence of paragraph E. The firm shall issue bills and statements to the client on a monthly basis beginning June 15th, 2020. The rest of that paragraph could stay the same. It would replace the, the sentence as it currently stands. The firm should issue bills and statements to the client on a basis as determined by the firm, example, monthly, quarterly, et cetera.
Can we make a, we have a, I, I can't, we, their contract through a resolution?
I suppose we can put that out there, and if he doesn't want to agree to it, then we could go from there.
I mean, wouldn't, wouldn't we have to make a resolution to propose contract? I'm not, not just, I mean, I don't think we can unilaterally just pass resolutions to change contracts with other.
Well, again, he would have
Karen, if you wanted to change the agenda, that would have needed done under three, adoption of the meeting agenda additions or corrections. So we're not going to be able to amend the motion for this here.
Okay, we'll do it next time. The community is not happy that we don't know what we're spending for an attorney that with his first bill, cost of $10,000 a month. Where is the transparency in that? I don't understand why this isn't something that's of concern to you, to the rest of the board. I also went to, when we received these
Well, let me just answer that, Karen, if you'd let me answer that. I don't believe that Dr. Mike is using his services to the extent that you might believe he's using them. He's reaching out to Attorney Markling as needed. And I would anticipate the bill to be much lower, so I don't think that you should anticipate $10,000 invoices.
I don't think Dr. Mike is doing that either. According to the first bill that I saw, I saw many conversations and emails with you, Carolyn. That's what I want to know, and the whole board should know. We should be kept abreast of what's happening with the board attorney, especially when it's a high cost. If it's not a high cost anymore, that's great, but we should know what's going on. I'm a duly member of this Board of Education, just like you.
Well, this is not the place to be discussing the conversations with the attorneys. As those are confidential and not to be discussed in open session. And I don't know, Dr. Mike, do you want to offer any suggestions here?
Sorry, didn't, had a hard time getting, I, I can't even guess what the bill would be, so I don't want to say, and I, I don't know what it'll be. I know Patty has reached out. If you, I could talk to Markling if you'd like me to about it. I don't know. That's probably, I do.
Thank you, Dr. Mike. It's not your responsibility. You're not reaching out more than you should, or Patty. I mean, it's appropriate when you do, I'm sure. But there's no reason why we shouldn't know what this cost But there's no reason why we shouldn't know what this cost is. That makes no sense that we don't know what the cost is. And in a timely manner, it's been over four months now since he's billed. And that's not, so that's, he's not even following this in a, in a, in a timely or on a regular basis. He's not billing on a regular basis. So he's not fulfilling contract.
Does anyone else want to share any opportunities for improvements and comments moving forward?
Yeah, I'd like to know if we are planning on allowing the public to speak again, since they have been on mute for seven, eight months now. We just saw that there are ways to bring people into this conversation. There are ways to take their comments and bring them in. They certainly are, the, the public is not happy with the repression that they're getting right now. Not being heard. They feel like they're not being heard. Tired of it, quite frankly. And, and we have the technology, we can do these things. There's, it's not difficult to do to bring public speaks back into our virtual meetings. So I would like us to, to bring those back. I mean, I don't, I don't know why we're not at this point. There's no reason to do it other than we don't want to hear what they have to say. And the idea of having them write things out and publish it is not the same. I'm sorry, that's not it. It's not, they're not even read during eating if someone writes it out. So there, there's pointless to do that. So it is, it, they, the public needs to be heard.
Okay. What, what format and that we do forward with that as a pre-recorded or?
I mean, we could, we could, we could pre-record it if they wanted. They could come in, we, we were inviting outside people now, they could be invited in and then leave. I mean, it's not, we have the ability to do that. And it's time, quite frankly.
I would like to just go on record saying, I, I don't think any of us are saying that we don't want to hear what anyone is wanting to say or what the general public is wanting to say. I mean, we have done the best that we can during COVID-19 to be able to give the opportunity for the public to speak as in a writing. And we're all very available with our phones and email as well. So I don't, I don't really appreciate Dr. Mason, you saying that we don't want to hear them. So I do believe all five of us do want to hear what they have to say. It's just, we are kind of limited with the technology. And I don't know, Ben, if that's something that we can look at or is that going to put more of a burden on you as well to try to do that? I appreciate just what you did with the students, that was wonderful. But is that something that would be too hard for you to, to do as well? I mean, our technology team does such a great job doing this twice a month. So I mean, is that going to be another burden as well?
There, there might be a few hurdles that we'd have to get over as far as making sure we receive videos in the correct format to be able to display if that's what you were to decide to do. But it's, it's not an insurmountable thing.
Thanks, Ben, and thank you for all the work you put in for tonight. That was wonderful, it was a great presentation, so thank you.
You're welcome, it was great to see the kid.
What are we going to do? I agree completely with Dr. Mason. This is the community, they have a right to speak, so we need to allow that and make that happen.
Dr. Mike, is there any way we can add something to our next, a resolution of the next meeting to, you know, approve that, to change our current process?
Sure, you, that's up to you, you could do that, totally up to the board. Would you like me to ask a couple of districts what they're doing? Would you, I'm not, I actually, I'm not sure.
It'd be good to get some input and see how everybody else as well.
Yep.
If you could, yeah, if you could get more information and then provide us with what adjustment we may need to make to our current policy and the, the current policy that's in place for our technology meetings, our remote meetings. We would need to look at all the pieces of that. If you could get us more information, that would be helpful.
Sure, I'll assume for you, so you can look at it and ask questions and, no problem.
Thank you, Dr. Mike.
Well, I'd just like to take a moment and thank Dr. Mike for the email he sent out, I believe this week, congratulating all of our athletes and our teachers that were recognized. And I hope everybody had the opportunity to read that. It was, we have a lot of very successful athletes and and I know it's been a tough year for our students and our staff and coaches. So we just want to recognize all your efforts that you put into this.
Thank you, I had a lot of help too, thank you.
Moving forward with, did anyone else have any comments under this sub-topic?
Yeah, I'm, I'm always muted. I want to talk, but, that's all right. I was just going to ask Dr. Mike if we, we're going to have, as like we did with the students of the month for those athletes that, you know, are, are being graduated. If there's any option to do that as well.
We, again, we can talk about that. I, I might suggest in the past, boards that I've been with have done, anybody that goes to state, we invite in as a team or individuals. That way we have that distinction, but we could certainly honor any level of, of that that you would like to do.
Okay.
Moving forward, the new revised related board policies. Is there a motion to approve the first reading of board policy 2431, interscholastic athletics?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Patty, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Gabriel?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphries?
Yeah.
Dr. Mason?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Approved five zero.
Business advisory resolution. Is there a motion to appoint Carolyn Gabriel as representative to the Greater Stark County School slash Business Advisory Board?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? If I could give a brief overview of the council. I had the opportunity to attend the Education Committee and Business Advisory Council meeting on October 27th. It's a meeting that's comprised of about 50 individuals who represent all levels of education and individuals from business and industry. The goal of the committee is to build and augment relationships between our education systems and business and industry. The meeting was very informative and I plan to volunteer to continue attending. I think attending this meeting will get more representation for Marlington and obtain more information for our students. Is there any further discussion?
I would just like to say.
Patty, please move the roll.
Carolyn, I would just like to say thank you for taking that on and for attending the meetings. I know that you spend hours doing all this, so thank you again and thank you for your service to the district.
You're welcome, I'm very happy to do that. Patty, please call the roll.
Mrs. Gabriel?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphries?
Yeah.
Dr. Mason?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevens?
Yes.
Approved five zero.
The treasurer's agenda, the first item is the finance committee report. I'll just give a brief overview of that and then I'll let Patty take it over because she'll do a better job explaining all the details of that. But the finance committee met on November 4th and the finance committee is Dr. Mason and myself. The additional ones present were Dr. Mike, Patty, Leslie Pierce, our assistant treasurer, and Ryan Zehoney. And we discussed the five-year forecast and went over several questions and there was a lot of good discussion on that. So Patty, I'll turn that over to you.
Thank you. I'd like to introduce Ryan Gazoni. He is a senior analyst for, or senior advisor for Forecast Five. He was a treasurer for 17 years and while he was a treasurer, he received the Outstanding Treasurer of the Year Award and his district was awarded the Meritorious Budget Award. So I think we're in good hands and I'm going to thank Ryan for his insight and his guidance and his help in putting all this data together and creating this five-year forecast. At this time, Ryan, can you give us an overview of the tool and just walk us through the data?
Yeah, thanks for having me. My name is Ryan Gazoni. Forecast Five is a company, our headquarters in Naperville, Illinois. However, there are six of us that work in Ohio. Up until last year, we were a company called PFR and then we're acquired. So we have an office down at the OSBA building and there's, like I said, there's six of us from Ohio that are all advisors. One of my teammates is the former head of the Ohio Department of Taxation. We work with about 230 districts across the state, as large as, two of the largest urban districts in the state and as small as districts with three or four million dollar budgets. So have a vast experience with several different kinds of districts, all different types of districts in the state. And when we were acquired by Forecast Five, one of the things we went to was from an Excel-based spreadsheet to a web-based spreadsheet. So let me go ahead and share my screen now. Can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Okay. And so what we have is we upload all of the information at the account level from your general ledger and use that information to make data-driven decisions and help you use, help you make forecast projections. In addition, we pull a lot of different databases from the Ohio Department of Taxation, Ohio Department of Education that allow us to see what's going on with your property values, how it could affect your tax revenue, what's going on with things that may affect the state funding formula. When we had a funding formula, we have a very simple one right now, as well as things with salaries, benefits and non-salary benefit-related expenses. So what I have for you here is your forecast I worked on with Patty and the assistant treasurer Leslie. And we have a simplified version here, this is called a simple, a keep it simple statement. And so what we're showing here is your beginning cash balance in 2021 of $6.7 million. We expect you to bring in about $24 million in revenue and expend about $26 million. As a result, you are going to, we're projecting that in 2021, you'll be spending more than what you're bringing in. So basically dipping into your savings by about $2 million. And by the end of the fiscal year, we're expecting that you'll have a cash balance of $4.6 million. Based on your revenue and expense trends that we'll get into here in a second, we believe that you're going to continue to deficit spend for the foreseeable future based on where your expense trends are and, and your revenue. As a result, the district, based on these current trends, appear to have a negative cash balance by 2023. And that's because of this year, the continued deficit spending. When we look at what's been going on in the district, the deficit spending, if you look here, started basically back in 2017. This here is your expense line and the expense trajectory. And then you can see here is your revenue line. You'll notice that there is a bump in revenue between 19 and 20. And what this is, is when getting your first Nexus about pipeline payment. And then you get your second half in 2020. So first half came in 19, second half came in, in 2020. After that, your revenue is going to be projected to be fairly flat. Because of House Bill 920 that relates to property taxes, the districts, as your property values go up and we do expect especially residential values to increase, your property, your property values drop. And so until you get to something called a 20 mil floor. And House Bill 920 says that you cannot get any inflationary growth until you hit the 20 mil floor. And, and once you hit the 20 mil floor, you can't drop below that. We're projecting the district may get to the 20 mil floor around 2025. And then what happens then, as your property values go up, you actually get additional tax income because you cannot drop below that millage rate. Right now, the only type of increase that you're going to get is on inside millage, that's part of your charter millage. Another thing is currently the state does not have a state funding formula. You're basically, you were guaranteed the funding level that you had back in 2019. However, because of COVID in 2020, the district was cut in, in revenue. And that is going to be continued to this year. The good news is, is when the forecast was done last May, it was not clear as far as what was happening with the state's budget and if there would be additional cuts. And there's a lot of speculation whether it was going to be additional cuts or not. The state is performing better than what their estimates were right now. And we do not believe there's going to be additional cuts extending at this point in, in the 2020 if things continue on the same trajectory that the state incomes on. There will also be, there's a lot of conversation right now around that new, every two years, there's a vote on a new state biennial, which includes a funding formula. And then there's been a lot of work, bipartisan work along with school business officials on a possible state funding formula. There is no increases right now, bill of state funding formula, because that's the current law. If that will change in the future, we'd incorporate that into your forecast. So right now, when we look at your state revenue, we're basically looking at it going back to the, your, your level in '22, going back to your 2019 level. You do have an interesting situation going on with your Nexus pipeline. They have filed for a reduction in property values, a pretty significant reduction in property values across the state. And so as a result, your projected amount of income from that, we've reduced those estimates based on what they have requested as far as an appeal, a reduction in, in values. That is not guaranteed that they're going to get that. The issue that you have though is, is that you have to plan your finances based on the information that you have. The state's not even going to hear that appeal. They've actually filed three appeals until May. And depending on what happens there, even if Nexus was not successful in getting those, their values lowered like they've requested, they could then appeal to the Ohio Supreme Court. And chances of that happening, I think, are very likely because of the amount of money they're investing into their, their legal defense. So even if they were to lose, you're looking at going to the Supreme Court and you'd probably be looking somewhere before, by 2022, 2023, before that was decided. The issue the district has is that Nexus has reduced their tax payments based on what they believe the value of their property is. So they're no longer paying it on what the current value of the property is. They believe that they're going to be successful in their, in their appeal and that those will be lowered. So they are paying at the value they think it's worth. And so until that is settled, you're, they're just going to pay at that much lower rate. And that's what we have in this forecast right now. You also have some, starting in 2024, you start to have a renewal levies coming on, 2024 and 2025. They'll be need to be renewed in order to continue that, that revenue source. In addition, in 2020, you had a one-time property settlement with, I think it was a tire company. And so that's why you see in 2020, a large increase in all the. And so that's why you see in 2020, a large increase in all the revenue. And then it drops in 2021 because that was a one-time payment. You're also seeing some other reductions. Your interest income is going to take a big hit. There is just not right now, the investments out there that there were two or three years ago. And so your, your interest is going to have some pretty significant drops because of that. Interest rates, the Fed funds, and you know, basically it's zero. So until there's some movement in that, you do have lower rates there. On the, before I get into expenditures, are there any questions on the, on the revenue side? Anything else I can go into further?
Ryan, I just had one question. You had said that the district lost money or had a cut in revenue due to COVID. Where are you showing the offsetting money that we received in grant money that almost fully offset that cut? Where are we going to see that? What line number is that one?
Good question. So the, the five-year forecast is only the general fund and the COVID cares money that was provided by the state is a 507 or it could be a 510 fund. So that is not included in the five-year forecast. That has a, you know, some specific expenses and any expenses that the district were going to use that were general fund, we've reduced those expenses to be, to go into that 507 fund. Or if they just had additional expenses, I think a lot of which you guys were investing in were additional things to cover while you're in this transition period that weren't part of the, let's say, the 2020, 20 expenses, that would not affect the forecast then.
Okay, thank you.
When we get into your, your expenses, in blue here, this is your salaries. It's the district's largest, largest expense. And so you have had some changes. You had some reductions in staffing in 2020. In 2021, with opening your building in classified and admin, there has been some additions to, which has increased some expenses there. You also have negotiated agreement, which I believe goes through the next two years. So those increases are in here as well as increases moving forward for longevity steps. Past the end of the negotiated agreement, there are no increases, base increases built in currently. You do have your step increases built in through 2025. And those, those start to increase as you get out in 2025 because of where your salary schedule is at and longevity of the staff. There's no additional retirements or reductions in staff in the projected forecast past 2021. You did have one position eliminated, I believe that's included in the 2021 salary projections. In, in orange here, this is your benefits. So health insurance and retirement, health insurance making up a bigger chunk. Part of your consortium, you have something what's called premium holidays and those have ranged in the past from two to four. Meaning you don't have to pay two months, let's say this year, of, of what your health insurance costs were because they give you a holiday on that. And then they also provide for increases in, in premiums each year. Their recommendation is typically not to put any premium holidays in and have a 10% increase. The district put, I believe, a 5% increase in and did include two premium holidays for '21 through '25. They believe that because they've had those historically, that they're going to continue those. Those have been included in there. In the, in the, the green color here, this is your purchase services and I'm going to switch views there. You have had increasing trajectory on that. And so when we talk about purchase services, what does that mean? And when you look at this graph here, this is what your purchase services are. And in pink, you can tell which is the largest portion is tuition. This is going to be not only open enrollment students going to other districts, it's going to be charter school students. It's going to be special education students that you pay a private facility to educate, as well as you may have students that their parents reside in your school district, but they are either court placed or foster place in another school district, and therefore you have to pay tuition to those school districts. This also includes college credit plus. So that is the, the largest portion, if we look at 2020 and 2021, of your purchase services. You also have services down here in, in blue, which is called contracted services. This is going to be things that you contract with from the ESC. It could be OT, PT for special ed students. This is also where things like any instructional services you purchase, legal services, they're all included in this blue area. Property services, $100,000, that 400,000 is going to be just your property insurance. And then the remaining is going to be basically repairs to your district's facilities. In purple here, you have your utilities. And then you're much smaller. You can see this would be like communications, internet costs, much, much more minimal. The reason why I illustrate this here is we know, we also take your general fund ledger every month. So Dr. Maine sends us a database every month. We upload it in the system. And we have projections saying, what did we think you're going to spend for the month? What did you actually spend? And how close are we to what is in this forecast? Are we trending closer or farther away from it? And what we know this far, this point in the year is that your tuition costs are up. You've had some additional costs from the county and some private placement facilities to educate students, which is driving up this pink from '20 to '21. We, as you come down here, you can see this is year-over-year changes in each one of those segments. We do not have the level of increases going forward that you have had historically. We've done basically inflationary growth moving forward. You could make the argument these should be increased even more because of historically, you have not seen those kind of settle down yet. Once we get farther into 2021 and we see where those expenses are going, that might lend to be where we're going to, if we need to make any changes out here as we get to 2022, 2023. Outside of that, we really look at what are you guys doing with your supplies? And those are mainly flatlined. When we look at supplies, these are going to be not only your classroom and office supplies, it's going to be custodial supplies as well as your transportation supplies. And we've talked about transportation supplies, that's going to be bus parts as well as bus fuel. That's one of the reasons why you started to see a dip in some of these areas. This here is your instructional supplies. You did see a dip in this area because of COVID, not having it for basically a quarter of the year. And you also saw some additional increases in things here like transportation and also your custodial supplies. Once we get past this year, there's minimal changes in your supply cost. One change from the May forecast that, that Dr. Maine made was in capital outlay. There were a lot more capital outlay expenses in here in order to try and avoid any inflated expenses or where you can offset some expenses. The decision was made to move some of those expenses out of the general fund and into your permanent improvement fund. So you can see this is basically just technology purchases moving forward here. Other than that, you just have a little bit of debt and other objects, which is going to be mainly your county auditor and treasurer fees dues and things like that. When we're looking at, at the forecast, like we said earlier, the district's at a point where you, you don't want to look at ways to possibly increase revenue and/or decrease expenses. By the time you get to 2023, right now, you can see that there's a projection of negative cash balance. However, there is a possibility with that negative cash balance that that's going to occur within the fiscal year, not just at the fiscal year end because of when your timing is with real estate collections, you get those in two big chunks during the year. Also, it would depend when you are transferring out a significant amount of money to your PI fund. Typically, that's made at the end of the year, as long as there's no obligations where you need to make that earlier in the year. That could also affect the timing of when you would need additional cash to make payroll rather than just at the end of the year. Right now, it looks like when we did some cash balance analysis, that you're going to get through '22 just fine on this trajectory. It's '23 where you'd really want to worry. What other questions can I hit on for you guys in relations to revenue, expenses, state funding, property taxes? So we do, once again, work with Dr. Maine each month. You'll have a monthly report that you get that's going to compare, how are you trending to this forecast for the current year? Are you trending farther away, meaning our expenses or revenue look like they're going to be lower? Are they going to be higher? Because every month, as things come in, and it's also going to compare it to where your expenses were the previous month. I'm sorry, the same time, the same month the previous year and year-to-date compared to the previous year, same time period. So it'll help you be able to gauge, well, how are things going with the district? And as you get closer to May, you'll have a better idea before May of where that forecast is trending. Any other questions for me? All right. I'd like to thank you guys for having me. And Dr. Maine can always reach me. And like I said, we work with her monthly. So if there are any questions, feel free to, to ask her and she'll be able to get those to us.
Thank you, Ryan. I appreciate all your help.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Next is, next on the list is the five-year forecast resolution, which is the exhibit ZZZ.
Is there a motion to approve the five-year forecast as presented and marked exhibit ZZZ is recommended by the treasurer?
Second.
Very discussion.
I, I just want to say that it confirms what we've been seeing for a long time. Some of us maybe more clearly than others. I've never claimed to be a financial expert and I'm not a tax accountant or risk assessor or loan broker, but I have common sense. And I'm really concerned. I want to make my statement related to this five-year forecast that the consideration is to take out a loan, a purchase lease agreement. I think this is super risky and I think that we should be looking at other options and means levy. Because if the community wants three elementary schools, they'll be willing to pay for them. They'll, they'll pay for what they support and what they want. I'm highly concerned, have continued to state this over and over and repeatedly about the cost. And I think we're looking in the wrong direction. This has nothing to do obviously with Dr. Mike or Dr. Maine. They are recommending what, you know, to try to move things forward education. And obviously that's more I can do, but take on additional debt when debt is the only thing on the rise at Marlin. Does not make sense. Our, our enrollment, we lost 134 students. That's huge and that's going to show up. Also, our, our funding, we have no clue about that. This is not the time to be taking on additional debt.
With all due respect, Karen, I do believe that you were on the board prior to that was going to do a risk, a risky lease purchase program for an all-new school. So I would just appreciate the fact of the matter that while we're looking into this as a board, that the record does speak for it, that you were on the board that wanted to go ahead with that. So I guess it was okay then for us to go into debt in a riskier situation than what it is now. And what we're looking at is giving great education to all three elementary schools. I don't think that's a problem for the community. I think we're just looking to enhance what great things we have to offer at Marlin. And I would also appreciate if we could just maybe conduct ourselves with a little more respect when we're bringing other people's careers or things to mind. We all have something great to offer, your talent, my talent, Josh's talent, as well as Dr. Mason's and also Carolyn's.
I would mention Danielle, that we were putting that out to the community because we wanted them to have a say, we wanted them to have a voice in whether we had a one consolidated elementary school. And we were giving them the choice with that. And then we were asking them to take responsibility to help pay for it. And to, for them to say, we want three elementary schools, but they are being unwilling to help pay for it. That is, that is not, that's not being mature. That's not the good, good sense and common sense. And you know, I do.
Elementary.
Pardon me?
Did you consult with the community about closing one of the elementary? Did you give them the option to keep those?
We did not. But here's your opportunity to, here's your opportunity to. We looked at the information that we had, which was enrolling down our funding, flatlining. And so that's why we chose what we chose. And you have the same circumstances now and additional costs have been taken on. You've continued to spend, not knowing what we have coming in. And now being faced with this again, same five-year forecast largely that we've received in the past, it's coming. So, so why are we talking about continuing to spend money when this continues to reverse?
To just clarify, factory, that's income, increased expenditures. This isn't something that just happened from last year to this year. But last year, even with this increase in expenses, you were pushing for a much larger expenditure by the district for a new elementary building. So we're, we're investing a fraction to bring our current buildings into a better condition for our students. Who, in the meantime, while we're discussing all this, are in buildings that haven't been maintained or taken care of for the past 20 years. So what we're looking at here mainly is putting our students in a better environment. It's going to need done sooner or later. So the question is, should we wait 10 more years, situation they're in, or should we do it now while we have the additional income from Nexus? And then we can reevaluate later on whether we need, you know, six months from now, a year from now, we can see how our workers are lining up with the forecast. And we can decide at that point whether we need to go for a levy or not.
Well, I think for your statement, I think it was our last meeting that we don't want to have to put an emergency levy on. And I don't think the community is going to be happy if, if they're going to warrant, Josh, excuse me. We're being warned about the trajectory of our spending. And if we continue to ignore it, I don't think the community is going to be happy about it. When we have renewal levies coming up too, are they going to be willing to pay for that? You know, we, excuse me, I was talking, excuse me. I was talking about some. I can't understand you. We were talking about pre-years earlier. I am a legal assistant for, you know, a law firm and we are debt collectors. And it's, it's amazing that the amount of debt that most people owe is not that big. But yet they, they have, they don't, they lack the ability to pay it back. And unfortunately then, that causes us to have to do so that they reach, they pay their money. And I mean, it's a simple concept. It's not about like, well, this is a really big debt or this is really small debt. If you lack the ability to pay, it's equal. It's all equal. So we are not in a good financial position and the discussion should be had to put it out there as a levy.
Not as good of a situation.
I would also just like to say too, you, you kind of are insulting the community when you're talking about having common sense. I believe everyone does have common sense. So that's kind of an insult to the community members, just saying, Karen. Oh, hold on. You, you got mad at Josh for interrupting. So I'm still chatting. Thank you. So and also I just want to put it out there as well that I do believe the community did speak when we ran for election. So they knew what Josh and I ran on as well and they knew what we were talking about. So you, you keep bringing up transparency over and over again, and that is something that we ran on. And I, I don't think that anyone is surprised by what we said. But we can just keep on continuing to do this and it's not going to solve anything. So it'd just be nice if we could continue on with the meeting at hand and stop arguing with each other like we're. It would just be nice to create a better example than what we're doing.
I mean, work towards a solution.
Gosh, yeah. That was better.
Another solution that again, helping, letting the community take responsibility and pay for something that they so that we can provide what we actually want to provide, the good education, I think we can all agree on it. But the space needed, we don't need those three buildings space-wise. Not asking eloquent about that or saying, oh, the community's on, sure, the community's awesome. But they have to take responsibility then for their wants. It's like, becomes a luxury. When you don't have the money, then something becomes a luxury and you have to be willing to pay for it.
Okay. And what, what was the savings of closing Marlboro again, Karen?
Well, looks like, looks like it was $1.6 million based on our deficit from last year to this year. If I'm looking, I'm correct.
That's, that's not how that equates, but good try. It's closer to $230,000 in salaries. That much plus utility costs, which we did. That much plus utility costs, which we did heat the building in the winter time. So it's less than 1% of our budget to close one school. So you guys did a real good cost benefit analysis right there.
According to the assumptions for the five year forecast, utilities are expected to increase by 54,000 for fiscal year 2021 due to Marlboro opening and grow by 2% each year thereafter. So it all compounds. And the, the point of the matter is, you, that's just a little bit of amount, but is it a necessary cost? If it's not a necessary cost, then it is not something that we could be putting our money toward. It's, it's that, it's that simple. I'm just putting it out there. I'm saying, you know what, if the community really failed elementary schools, I'm sure they would be willing to pay for it. Josh, you mentioned there's money out there, you know, the fire levy because people want it, you know, they supported that. I'm sure that it, that's the case. And that's really what the community wants. It would just be awesome that we wouldn't have to worry about payments and, and doing this lease purchase agreement. It would be awesome if we could put that money towards education. You told Dr. Mike that you would like to increase programming. There's no way you're going to increase programming. If you're barely making it by, you're actually going to decrease because we'll have to let staff go. It, it, this is, is just what I'm putting out there as what is a common sense thing is you don't go in for it.
Apparently nobody else has it.
Well, you know.
Yep.
Karen, I don't want you to lose sight of the whole conversation we had with Becky Prince Horn tonight. And we do have Nexus money coming in. It's coming in at 38% of the projected value. And although that may decrease slightly each year due to depreciation, that is coming in and Nexus is required to pay that amount through the entire appeal. And her recommendation is to structure our payments based on what we're receiving from Nexus. So that is extra money coming in from Nexus that can be used. It's in our capital projects funds can be used to improve our elementary schools. Those needs have not gone away and they won't go away. If we don't fix them now, they're just, that needs are going to compound and be more expensive in the future. We've tried for nearly 20 years. We've presented different packages to the voters to approve new buildings. And they have consistently said no. But yet when Josh and Danielle ran on, ran their campaign on opening Marlboro and fixing the elementaries, they won over two incumbents. So I think the message is pretty clear that this community wants their buildings and they want, want us to take care of them. The additional piece to Nexus is that two or three years down the road, eventually this appeal is going to get resolved. Now, I think we'd be foolish to believe we're going to get 100% of the value. But it seems reasonable that we're going to get more than 38%. And when we get that lump sum settlement, perhaps even with interest and penalties in two or three years from now, that seems to align pretty nicely on that five year forecast with fiscal year 2023. So I'm not looking at this as that we need to go to the voters. I think the voters are telling us be responsible. Tighten your belt. I mean, we just heard that our purchase services is extremely high. Let's look at ways. What ways can we look at tightening our belt with purchase services? Can we provide some of these services ourselves and cut costs? I think Patty and Dr. Mike are going to work diligently on this and be making recommendations to the board so that maybe they can cut some expenses out here. I mean, look at staffing. You're right. If enrollment's declining, should we be looking? I mean, your recommendation is to look at cutting back on some staffing. Maybe that's going to need to happen. And at some point when we don't have any other sources, then of course we're going to have to ask the community, but I think it's premature at this point. When we know that we have other sources and we have three buildings that, two, two additional elementaries that need our attention. And I don't know if you had the opportunity to read some correspondence that Dr. Mike put out to a community member. And I'll just highlight a couple of comments that he said that I thought really highlighted the situation with the elementaries. Where he said, doing the elementaries together would be the most economical thing to do. The lease purchase makes sense. The interest rate is very, very low. It's historically low at this time. Of course, that's not my favorite thing to do, go borrow money. But to get our buildings up, to give our students a 21st century education, I don't see how we could choose one over the other. We have the opportunity. Dr. Mike said it's would be expensive to continue doing the repairs on one building while we fix the other. We're going to save money in utilities, repair bills. And above all, as Josh said, we would give our students the best education possible and give our staff a great place to work. So, um, I, I don't disagree that at some point we may need to have a discussion about asking voters for more money, but at this point, it's my opinion that it's premature.
And I'd just like to point out that, you know, everybody likes to think that Marlington is in dire situation all of a sudden. It, it is definitely something we need to plan for and either we have to really take a look at what our expenses are or whether we need a levy in the future. Operating levy, not a bond. I, I'd say we just need to look to some of our neighboring districts that are putting up levies, one behind the other. After successfully having bonds that were supposed to save money. And, uh, you know, they're cutting busing, they're cutting teachers and staff to the tune of millions of dollars. We're not at that yet. But part, part of, part of us passing a levy is garnering the support of the community. And to do so, as I've always said, we need to listen to the community. Try to do what the community is asking us to do and not, not the other way around. Telling the community, preaching to the community what they have to do. That doesn't seem to work out very well. So I, I just think we need to continue the route of, you know, fixing up the schools. It's, it's what's right for our students at the elementary level. I don't know why, you know, we'd all of a sudden not fix those other two schools, given the current circumstance. We have options as far as financing where we can, we can go as far as 10 years with no prepayment penalty. We can make larger payments to pay down the, pay down the principal so that our interest isn't killing us over the years. And then a year down the line, we can look over where we're at and decide whether we want to use all the Nexus money to continue making payments or whether we need to take a portion of that money and put it towards the general fund to help, help offset, you know, the expenses. And we definitely look at, you know, the whole picture here. But we've got all kinds of flexibility right now that other schools don't. And so at this point, to throw a levy right now, I think would be premature, given, you know, the situation with COVID-19 and the fact of back to back bond issues just being thrown at the community. What we need to do is show the community where we're at. We need to show them, you know, how, how our income, our revenue is stagnant and show them a period of 10, 20 years. Also show them how the increase in expenses has gone up and how, you know, we, we tighten our belt, we do the best we can. Marlington, you know, is a pretty efficient district. And show them the timeline and history of new money that Marlington's gotten as operating levies go. And I'm sure we'll be able to get the community on board when the time comes to it.
Our positions are clear. I think that, that going into further debt is wrong at this time. And that's pretty much sums it up for me. So that's fine. What you think, you have your position, I have mine.
Well, if we, if, if we and moved it all to the general fund to offset the current excess in expenditures over revenues, we would just be kicking the can down the road, doing that anyhow. And it would just make it a point where it boiled over and got even more and you'd have to ask for, you know, an even more higher levy at that point. So we're going to have to look at the whole picture. Like I said, see where we're at, show the community where we're at and then move forward from there.
I just want to mention that I took some time today and I went back through the prior five year forecasts. And I put together a spreadsheet, which I have just emailed to all of you to look at, at your leisure. I started with fiscal year 2015 and I only picked up the actual figures with the exception of fiscal year 2021, which part of that's actual, part of that's forecasted. It won't be considered actual to the end of the year. And you can use that just to look at our comparison year to year of our revenue. And primarily the increase would be due to the Nexus money. And look at our expenditures over the years. It doesn't go out into the future. It's just the actual forecast that have been filed with the, with ODE and they are on record. So, um, and I think even going back further than that to see how long we have actually had our budget at, you know, our revenue has been pretty stagnant through the years. And I think it's just a good, good review to look at all those figures.
Dr. Main, could you share with us your recommendation from the finance committee meeting? Cause I think people need to hear that, you, you as an outsider looking at this. And, and before you even say it, I agree, the buildings need work. There's no doubt about that. I do take a little offense, Josh, when you say they haven't been maintained
They have.
For, for 20 years.
That's good. Good that you take offense that.
I mean, they have been, they just have been band-aided for that long.
Exactly. So therefore I am offended as well that you think that Band-Aid is maintenance.
No, I think maintenance is changing your oil. I think changing your engine is not maintenance. Maintenance is what they've done. Roofs.
Just that they were Band-Aids.
Yeah, I, they've done maintenance. You said they didn't do maintenance. They didn't do any maintenance. And that's, I take.
Proper maintenance.
We don't have roofs, we don't have new furnaces, air conditioning units, new windows. That's not, that's not maintenance. That's overhaul.
Maintain your house by replacing things that are outdated and failing frequently.
Yeah, but the foundation of your house, you maintain that by replacing it on a regular basis. Don't do things. And, and a school is not a house, it's not a barn. It's something that has high use. So it's more like your car.
No, it has no wheels, Scott. So it's not.
That's a better mark as far as goes. Oh, your house? You have 400 kids run through your house every day, Josh?
Uh, no, but the school doesn't have wheels, Scott.
That, when you compare it to a house or a barn, that's the wrong thing.
What this conversation's about, but okay.
It's about you insulting our maintenance people and saying that buildings have not been maintained for 20 years and it's waiting things weren't there.
The maintenance people, they, they were given their orders and did what they were told to do. I'm talking about the people controlled what gets done in the whole district. And we had school buildings that have leaky roofs. You know, people keep telling them not to fix it because we're getting new buildings in a year, year after year after year. So no, I don't blame the maintenance. I blame the previous school board majorities that kept pushing that instead of fixing, fixing it right, which is what the community wanted. So if you, you're.
Now.
What?
The high school roof now that needs fixed still. Don't talk of that because we're talking about fixing, creating spaces, fixing spaces we don't need. We don't need space-wise.
You guys just put new conditioning in at the high school. And they talked, we, you know, instead of putting on a new roof. So we're, we're bringing all of the buildings, you know, what we can as we can. That's what we talked about last week is prioritizing what we're right, you know, back in the beginning, when we first got on here, you know, when we talked about fixing up the elementary schools. You know, Scott made the recommendation that we start with Marlboro because it was closed. That was before COVID hit and we didn't know the other schools were going to be closed. But I think bringing up the other two elementary schools with air conditioning and then looking at the high school roof down, down the road, yes, that makes absolutely, you know, positive you know, way to go. They've, they've got AC at the high school. They don't have AC at Lexington, Washington.
And also I would like to just go on record too. We've never, I know Josh hasn't insulted anyone in our maintenance group, especially with his career choice as well and his family's career choice. And I know that we have been very vocal about being so thankful to our staff and our maintenance staff for doing all that they have during COVID and everything else to get Marlboro running. I do believe we went on record and thanked them and was very grateful for that. So I just want to go on record with saying we're very appreciative of all the staff members and everything that they do on a daily basis to keep Marlington running. But this is, this is not solving anything. All we're doing is fighting like children and it's not getting anything accomplished.
Why don't you Scott originally asked Dr. Main her, what her recommendation was. So Dr. Main, please do give your recommendation.
My recommendation a few nights ago, we somehow have to increase our revenue or decrease our expenses. Some of that is just looking at our staffing to student ratios. It's looking at all of our departments. It's looking at where are our expenses going out, looking at our programming. You know, which students are coming in versus why are some of our students going out? Those are the things that we have to attack. Of course, all of those takes some time. That's why I think it's, I think it's urgent for us to start looking at this stuff and planning because, you know, I, I always think it's good to balance our budget. So I would, I would, I would say another thing, use, use part or all of the Nexus funding for operating. You know, whatever you guys decide moving forward, I think, you know, the important takeaway here is we just make, need to make a plan and we can't let those, that sneak up on us in 2023. Whatever we're going to do, we just need to really look into some pieces and parts and have a good plan moving forward.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, I just want to follow up on that just briefly with, um, the board had voted to set up the Nexus money to go to the capital projects fund. And as that was revisited tonight, that was to keep it off the five year forecast. We use it for improvements to the buildings and large capital funds. And by doing that, that does help us not to get, not to have our foundation dollars cut back for that. So, um, to free up operating money by using the Nexus funds for capital improvements and remodeling our elementary schools, eventually doing the roof to the high school. That will free up then our operating funds and hopefully with looking at all of our costs and talking about other things, we can eventually get our budget balanced.
We need to take approach to all this. I don't think we have to go.
Can you say that one more time, Josh?
I, I said, I think we need to take a balanced approach to all of this. Not go 100% that direction or 100% that direction. There's middle ground that we can, you know, work out and plan for the worst. And, you know, we, we have options here. It's not one thing or the other.
Also, I just would like to say too, due to COVID-19, we have been able to social distance a lot more effectively than other schools because we do have three elementary schools. So had we have not had the three elementary schools, we would have been. So had we have not had the three elementary schools, we would have been a little hard pressed to social distance as effectively as we are doing.
Patty, I do want to thank you for all the work you did put in on the five-year forecast and having the finance committee meeting and, um, helping us through the process of understanding everything and bring, bringing Ryan in from Forecast Five to go through things with us. I appreciate all of that and, and thanks to Leslie as well, she attended our finance committee meeting. And that was helpful also. Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, I just, I'd just like to tell Dr. Mason that I apologize if he misunderstood, mistook what I said.
And Josh, I, I'm sorry too. I, I will say this, I 100% agree with Josh, what he said about balance. I think we need to look at that and look at the whole picture. Press us over the next couple of weeks to do that, uh, with Dr. Patty and, and, but, but the whole picture of the cost of the remodel versus our deficit spending versus where and have a plan how we're going to attack that. Because it may be that we need to, if we're going to finance this, finance this longer, um, to keep our payments down initially, that if, you know, when, when the final Nexus comes through, then we can use it to pay down larger, but balance that, that going, um, you know, in both directions, but, but really taking the time to, which, which we all have a whole lot of, but taking the time to figure out what are the, how much do we want to save internally here versus how much can we bring in maybe from the Nexus funds to help with some of that imbalance? Because the one thing Ryan said and, and, and Dr. Patty might remember this too, that scared me and Carolyn, I, I, he talked about the potential was depending on how the funds came in, we could be in the red in '22 at a given point, if we could have a payroll due and we don't have the funds because we haven't gotten a certain payment in on that. So he had a little concern about earlier, so that scared me.
Well, I thought he had said, he made it clear that we were good through 2022 and that 2023 is where we would run into an issue.
Monday, he said there was a potential, depending on how the funds are transferred in, that we could be behind at that point. So I, I think we need to think about both. We cannot ignore the fact and we cannot think that we may have to pull some of the Nexus money in to help with operating expenses just to keep that deficit down. And then when, again, when, when the final Nexus ruling comes in, there'll be a larger sum, hopefully. You know, it's, it's still there, but I think, I think the idea of balancing that plan is important. And I know what I'm doing right now to, to Carol and Dr. Mike and Dr. Patty is creating a lot of what ifs as far as where we can save money and probably in a hurry before we walk into some of this. But I think we need to think about that. We can't just ignore that. Uh, because we are, I mean, if, if we're in $2 million of deficit spending this year, that's not going to last very long. Uh, so, so we need to, we need to really consider that and look into that. So, and that's, that's what I have.
If I could just add a couple as we, we wrap up here, a couple of things. I, I think everybody has, has contributed some meaningful information. And Dr. Mason, what a good point. Now it's up to Patty and I, and, and we'll include Carolyn conversations. We've got to give you the scenarios of what can we do? How can we do it? Um, that's our job and we're going to work on that. Uh, we have to work within the parameters of what we have and the pie is only so big. Um, I'm a little bit nervous about the forecast. I'm a little bit nervous about putting the premium holidays in there. Um, but remember too, this is the way that Ohio school funding works. Um, the Supreme Court has said three times, it's unconstitutional. So we have to work with that. We have to work within those parameters. And, and honestly, I think your conversation tonight has been healthy. Everyone contributed. You've got my wheels spinning, so, um, we'll, we'll take it from here. We'll take it from here.
Dr. Mike, are you, um, planning on attending that seminar tomorrow that's on, uh, the state? It's about the state funding and how it's impacted, is or isn't going to be impacted by the pipeline money? I mean, you or Patty, if somebody could attend that, that would be probably really helpful to, to know that.
Yep, so I'll talk with Patty about that. And then just so you know, um, our organizations, Bassa and OASBO and OSBA, they'll give us, their experts will give us a fantastic, easy to understand synopsis of that. So when we get that. Yep, so yeah, we're on that. We got our notice today that that's coming. If they stay on track, it'll be tomorrow. So we'll see what happens.
Okay. That sounds great. Okay, Patty, please call the roll. Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Humphreys?
Yeah.
Dr. Mason?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevens?
Yes.
Prove five zero.
The announcements, November 7th through 10th is virtual capital conference. Um, there is a pre-recorded, um, webinar that you can listen to on how to navigate that conference. It'd be available this, um, I think, starting this evening. November 12th is virtual parent teacher conferences. November 19th is also virtual parent teacher conferences. Are there any other announcements?
I, I had a question real quick, just a general question. Um, we haven't put up our previous five-year forecast on Marlington's website. Um, how soon Patty, do you think we, or I don't know, that's a more appropriate question for Ben or somebody, whoever. But, um, I'd like to see us get both that forecast, um, and this forecast up there so that people could have access to it.
I will work on that, Mr. Hagan.
All right, thank you.
The next board meeting, regular meeting is November 19th at 7 o'clock PM. That will be a virtual meeting, is our motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Great discussion. Please call the roll. Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphreys?
Yes.
Dr. Mason?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevens?
Yes.
Prove five zero.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, everybody. Thank you.